And we're back. And we are kicking off our first conversation and we are talking all about the Belize City Municipal Bond, the new one I should say, which launched yesterday. And here to discuss that with us are Oscar Arnold, who is a councillor from the Belize City Council, and we also have Christopher Coi here from Alpha Capital LLP, who is the financial advisor. Good morning and thank you for joining us.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
So this bond launched yesterday.
Sure.
And perhaps you can start off by telling us sort of in a nutshell, what are the main objectives behind or what do we hope to achieve by the launch of this bond?
Okay, sure. So the public offering was launched yesterday and that is where we introduced to the public the prospectus and also some of the intricacies and some of the advantages of the bond. What we hope to achieve is to create another financial instrument that will take advantage of the liquidity in the banking system, in the financial sector, where investors would want to gain a little bit better return on their investment or on their money as opposed to putting it in a bank. And then the city council getting much needed funds that it can use for its operations and for its upgrading and for some of the capital infrastructure that we want, sorry, the physical infrastructure that we want to do.
So what's interesting about the timing is that you're launching a bond when you're still repaying another one. How is this managed?
The previous bond has a sinking fund where the receipts from the head tax, from the cruise tourism that comes in, and also the monthly subvention from the government went into a fund to secure that bond.
Yeah.
And those have finite, definite repayment periods. With this bond, it's a revolving bond, so we have some issues that will mature at intervals and it can be renewed. So in that aspects, it's similar to the treasury bills that the government provides. Now, what we've been able to do at the council is to restore a high level of fiscal prudence. We've shown that without Big Brother's help, we can keep our doors open as well as continue with some of the programs that we have there, which was very important. And so we're taking advantage of that capability of telling investors, listen, we have restored the financials at the city council. Here is what we have done. Sajik Faraz has just finished an audited report that has also been launched and made public. And so using that strength, we've been able to tell investors, listen, this is what we want to do. This is a bond that we can safely see, has repayability, and it's revolving. So for example, if you invest Marlini and a year down the road, you decide that you want to divest and sell off, the market is there. We have people in the market who, as long as they have that investor confidence in you, will want to do so.
Yeah. So let's step back a minute.
Sure.
Because we do have to acknowledge that we're talking finances in a period of uncertainty. And we were talking during the break, as everyone else in the country, is about COVID-19 and the potential impacts. So when you talk of a bond being serviced through head tax and cruise tourism, or even money from the government at this time, the subvention, what's the security that you have in being able to meet those payments, especially looking at what we are about to face?
That previous bond had some repayments that have already been done to it and a sinking fund in there, I believe, has the capability to take care of that bond over the next maybe eight to 12 months.
Okay.
Obviously with COVID-19, big game changer worldwide, globally.
Yeah.
And so discussions will have to be made. We know and we're already looking at what the numbers will, how it will impact the sinking fund as it goes, as far as it goes for the cruise head tax.
Yeah.
No cruise passengers come, then there's no cruise tax. So at some point, we will have to look at it if we know or if we envision that it will be adversely affected, we will then have to look at how we can maybe bridge it with this new bond that's going in or calling the investors from that previous bond because these discussions will be taken countrywide. The government will be talking to banks, banks, they will be talking to credit unions, and everybody will have a part to play in how we will manage and how we will rescue and recover from the financial crisis that is looming over our heads.
Yeah. Now, it's rather unfortunate that your, the current bond has to be launched at this time, but it is an opportunity in itself as well as people look at where they can potentially make money from the money that they do have.
Yes. I think, I guess there's a level of uncertainty as to what will be the outcome, but appreciating where we are right now will give you a level of comfort, certainly from the council's standpoint, as to the likelihood of success of this launch. Certainly from institutional investors that had expressed their interest, by and large, they have continued to indicate their commitment to complete their purchase as we launch this product. So I think we have every confidence that it will be a full success in terms of this initial seven million launch. It's useful to appreciate the financial situation as we currently find ourselves in. We have a very liquid market. We have over 200 million, as of the end of February, I think it was around 215 million of excess liquidity. We have the treasury bill rate at historic lows, around one and a quarter percent. Equally well, the deposit rate, the weighted average deposit rate is at 1.14% as at the end of February as well. So, and with this product being launched, we're looking at three times, roughly three times the rate of return on those other investments. As far as other products out there, there are not many other options that provide that rate of return. Now, in terms of the central bank or the likely central bank option being undertaken with respect to the same COVID virus situation, that's only going to further support this launch in effect, simply because with the opening up or reducing of reserve requirements, that would mean that although we already have quite a bit of liquidity, there should be more liquidity, which would in turn mean a downward pressure on interest rates. So again, relatively speaking, as interest rates get pushed even further down, this becomes even more attractive as an investment opportunity.
Part of, sorry, part of this municipal paper as well is that the fiscal agent will manage an account where one year of interest payments will be lodged with them. So for the foreseeable first year, for the short to midterm interest payments, investors will know that your investment and your return on your investment is very safe because you will get that, you will get that paid back.
Yeah. Now, what's the level of commitment you have so far? You clearly are speaking of the fact that we know that, we knew that the Belize City Council was looking to create another bond and you were talking to other persons already. What's the level of commitment you have so far?
Initially, the initial offer was going to be six million and then that was oversubscribed, meaning we got more interest to it. We had some letters of intent that were also signed.
Sold out.
Yes, sold out.
Even before, you know.
So the appetite is there, definitely. I think that there's areas of opportunities even with the financial landscape being changed by COVID-19.
Yeah.
So that is a plus as well. And so we keep treading on. I think the mayor made an excellent point yesterday when he said, we are already a struggling economy and if we paralyze it further and we shut down, we know cruise tourism, we don't have a control over that, but if we shut down other facets, other areas of our economies, then we really will be in trouble. So while it may seem as if though it's business as usual, we are business as usual, but we're taking a look and we have contingencies in place for COVID-19, but we can't paralyze the economy. We are the largest municipality in the country. We have the largest population and so we have to act responsibly as well. We can't take any actions, knee jerk, knee jerk actions or reactions.
Yeah. Now, I'm trying to, we need to simplify the conversation.
Sure.
Because we don't have an investment culture in Belize. I think there are limited opportunities for investment.
The money markets are still very young.
You're talking BL, BTL, treasury bills, the bond before and now this bond. So it's not something that we talk about very often. Let's simplify the opportunities that are here. If I have maybe a small term deposit in a credit union or a bank, or if I have some savings somewhere that I actually want to generate more interest from than what's being offered at my financial institution, what will be the benefit if I buy into your bond?
Right off, right off the bat, the benefit would be the return on your investment. We have many retirees who live off the interest from their, from their deposits.
Yes.
And I think Chris alluded to earlier that everything is open for discussion with the government talking to the central bank, talking to commercial banks on either giving a moratorium on loan payments, which includes interest and principal payment. So if the banks are making less money, the argument would follow that they would want to pay less, even less money. So that interest rate spread, I think, will be, will be hard to maintain.
Yeah.
But with a product like what we have that is guaranteeing you three times of what you're getting right now, and also the stability of a city council that has shown prudence, fiscal prudence and so on, it behooves you and it makes you want to look at it and say, listen, this is another option that I may have. It's very viable and it's short term. You don't have to be locked up for a year or six months. You can, you can buy one of the issues that I think it's sixty days, ninety days.
I was gonna ask, what are the terms?
Ninety days, yes.
They have three tenors or three terms.
Thank you.
One is three months, the other is six months, the other is one year. There's automatic rollover unless you give notice. So just like how you experience with a CD, if you have a six month CD, typically the bank rolls it over endlessly until you decide you don't want to renew it. It will operate in effect the same way as with this municipal paper. So in that sense, it is quite familiar to a CD. It's in effect like putting a, creating a CD with the Belize City Council instead of the bond.
And you can be very nimble because you can, you can purchase a portion of each of the issues and kind of mix and match your investment portfolio.
Because the interest rates are different depending on how long you're buying in.
It's a little bit higher in the longer term, but for the shortest term, you still get three times of what any interest rate you're getting right now in the financial sector.
So let's talk about the difference with the terms then.
Right. So the three month is 3.2%, the six months is 3.45% and the one year is 3.7%. So that's, that's the range of interest rate returns that you can get depending on the term of the paper that you purchase.
And the fiscal agent, which is Heritage Investments.
Heritage Financial Services.
Yes, they will be the investment group, sorry, the fiscal agent that will be managing and overseeing all of this.
Okay.
So with as little as $5,000, you can purchase a certificate, a municipal paper certificate as your investment. So while we have had discussions and letters of interest or intent from institutional investors, the opportunity is not limited to institutional investors.
Well, that, thank you, because that was really going to be my question. You opened by saying you're oversubscribed, which means you have so many people who want to buy into your bond.
On the initial six million.
Yeah.
But there's a, there's a, there's a trigger in there that it can even go up for more, that we can make the offering for more.
And so if somebody's watching now and saying, this sounds interesting, that sounds like more money than what I'm going to get if I put it in somewhere else, I may want to pursue this. What route do they take? Is it still available? What's the timeframe that they have to get this done?
I think, yeah.
Sure. No, well, obviously they can contact the city council.
Yes.
We have our phone lines there. We can, you can go on our webpage, you can go on our Facebook page and get those contact numbers, or you can contact the fiscal agent directly as well and they can provide the information on that. You can pick up a prospectus so that you can do your own due diligence and look at the numbers and look at the options that you have there and then sit down with us at the city council or the fiscal agent and then we can work it out and direct you to where you need to then follow the forms and that sort of stuff.
I think the prospectus will be available in physical form, but will also be available on the website. So you can actually just log or get onto the website and review the terms of the prospectus.
And of course, the prospectus is really just showing the efficiency that you have as a council, that there's a bit more trust in you being able to.
And it also explains some of the other legal facets, what the fiscal agent does legally, what the city council legally does, what is expected from investors and that sort of thing as well.
And it gets into more detail concerning the features of the municipal paper as well. So yes, it's certainly useful to, and recommend it that you take a look at the prospectus and know what you're getting into.
Yeah.
I mean, in the, in the US, in their financial sector, the government is still rolling over bonds that they issued from World War II. And so municipality and governments, those are very safe investments, once the numbers are in order and once you have people in place who will ensure that instruments like these do not fail.
Yeah.
And if you speak to a banker, they'll tell you, what do you, do you look at when you're deciding on whether to give a loan? You know, that credit risk management or credit adjudication on, in deciding whether to give a loan, it's the repayment capacity. That's first and foremost on the minds of, of that banker. And in the same way, when you look at an investment, that's what you want to have comfort level on.
Yeah.
So that's what the prospectus in effect speaks to.
Yeah.
And the performance of the council supports or evidences that they have the fiscal prudence and the management competency to perform in a way that will ensure that these types of securities and credits are serviced in proper order.
And you get to, you get a great return on investment, but you also to get, you also get to invest in your city, in the improvement, in the upliftment of your city. So that's a win-win.
Yeah, that, and that was actually going to be my next question because I'm sure that a lot of our viewers, especially those who live in the city, are listening to this conversation and they're also wondering, well, how is this now going to affect, you know, the management of the city and what exactly is looking forward, what can we expect from the council itself?
So there, there was several factors when we were looking at financing for the council, but we knew we had to fix what we had at our base and at our foundation first. We met a four million dollar, what we call user credit when we came into power that was used to, for electioneering. We also had some long-term payables, which when we grouped them together was about seven million dollars. We've been able to dispense with some of those while still trying to maintain what we were doing as a council because obviously that is what people will graduate.
Yes.
But now we want to go even further and say, okay, we've fixed some of the structural deficiencies that we met and now we are ready now to even mushroom and go further and to do some of the more infrastructural works that we really see the city needs. And so that is what gave birth to this bond and the thinking that, you know what, we can get institutional investors. We've had many businesses who have collaborated with us on other programs and doing some other stuff. And so this is just widening that scope and having people say, listen, we believe in what you're doing, we want to invest in it. And the icing on the cake is obviously getting three times what you're getting at any of the banks right now.
You know, it's a, it's a tough situation and I, I've had this conversation with Mayor Wagner as well. You and the mayor.
Sure.
Have extensive banking experience and it is a part of the focus in the city council that you kind of wanted to get in and fix the votes.
Sure.
But what the public and voters are accustomed to is seeing the work being done. And so it's, it was a bit of a gamble there. What's the type of work that you are looking at? Because from what I understand, the bond will also be used to service some debt as well. So it's not that all this money is going to go directly back into the city.
Yes, but to service some debt that you are on the hook to pay back anyway.
Yeah.
And so your monthly outlay to that, that cash will be also available to you. So your, your general operating fund would also be there, available to you to do some of those works. I think right off the bat, we have about 22 streets that will be, that will be retrofitted, upgraded. Some of them will be concreted, some of them will be chip and sealed.
Yeah.
And so that right off the bat will be done. I think there's a park on South Side, Ring Road Park in the Lake Island constituency that will also be integrated and upgraded and kind of wanted to mimic a rival what we have on the North Side at BTL Park. Obviously, we don't have the sea there, but we want to provide that level of, that level of comfort and a level of entertainment for people on the South Side and they don't have to trek all the way over there. So that is also in there as well. But like I said, yes, you're absolutely right, it's not the sexy part of it, but you can't do the rest if you don't do that groundwork first. And I think that the council has also proved to have a very soft side when it comes to people, we're a council of the people and about the people. And so a lot of our social programs, I woke up this morning to the news that a mother and her child were shot again. So for example, our grief counselling or grief therapy is one of the programs that we've launched and that we're very proud of because that provides some level of support and wraparound services for victims of crime of that nature. And we've had other social infrastructure programs that we've launched. Those are not sexy, they don't generate income, but those are services that the people wanted. Those are programs that when we were campaigning, people said, listen, we need this, we need that, we're not getting enough of this. Some of it obviously is the government obligating its responsibility, but as a municipality, we saw the dynamics changing, the paradigm shift where, the paradigm shift where people, yes, want some services, but they're also looking to where can I, where can I go to get an ear to someone to listen to me to provide some of those social services as well?
You know, and I think there's always a need for more people centered programs, but then there are also some gaping deficiencies in the city as well.
Sure.
If we go to just the basic of an efficient city in public transportation.
Agreed.
And so these are some of the areas that we really haven't seen the type of progress that one would want from any council that comes in and say they're going to uplift the city.
Yep, agreed. And we've been able to revitalize in one program that we did with the downtown super city sale, super sale, sorry. We've been able to revitalize downtown, bring some volume of business to business as well, allowing consumers and residents to stretch their dollar. So that was just one program. We've become a victim of our own successes because people see what can be done and they want more. We at the council, we understand what it took to get there and we understand what it will take to even go further. The council is around 25, 26 million dollars per year when it comes to inflows. We believe, like the mayor said the last time, we have about 2,300 businesses that are registered for trade tax. There's another 1,700 that are not. We have properties in the city that are not registered on our system to pay property taxes. And the way that we can provide services is to collect the fees and taxes under the law that allows the city council to do that.
Yeah.
So we understand it. This is our first term. I think we've been able to complete around 80 to 85% of what we set out to complete in our manifesto, which is a great thing. And so we're looking, the future is looking brighter and we understand some of those deficiencies that you speak of, but many of them did not happen overnight. Some of them have been deficiencies for 14, 15 years and that won't be turned around in just one term. But where we go from here, the sky's the limit obviously, because once you fix what you have at your base, what you have at home, then you can springboard and you can go even further.
So the primary investments that we're going to be seeing from the money that is raised from the bond is going to be infrastructure work, getting some of the streets in order.
Yes.
As we said, servicing some debt, which will loosen up your cash flow. Any other major projects that people can look forward to or investments is going to be made?
Sure. We also have the lining of some of the canals. I know central government has a project that they're looking at. We've already spent in excess of $400,000 to dig out those canals and so we didn't see the type of flooding that we were used to in the city. Again, that's not a sexy program, but it was something that needed to be done because that hadn't been done in about almost 14, 15 years.
Yeah.
So that sort of thing. We also want to look at how we can, we've almost eliminated the peaks and valleys, the highs and lows that we used to hear about in, I think it was MAGA season type kind of thing, when July to kind of August and October came around.
You used to collect most of your revenue in the.
In the first three months, yes, almost 65% of that. So we've sort of eliminated that, we want to do that more. We don't see the type of ruckus on TV with suppliers taking us to court for payment, employees getting payment late, that sort of thing, retirees who live on the fringes and on the margins, they're getting their payments on time. And those are some of the things that we wanted to do. So we fixed that, we fixed those and now we're looking at other areas that we want to try to make sure that there's some efficiencies where the council is concerned.
Yeah. Okay. And, I mean, you're talking about being able to ensure that you're going to, I think you said you're at 80% collection for property tax.
Sure.
Is that what the audit said?
Yes.
Do you think you'll be able to achieve that again this time around, given the current financial situation?
And again, this is where, for our sins, myself and Mayor Wagner, we'll have to look at it and look at the numbers and see what's going on because.
It's on me, Chris, it's the timing, right?
No, no, but COVID will bring some impacts that we aren't certain of just yet. We have to remain nimble, you kind of have to keep with the changing times. But we will see because like I said, we're, we're all about the people and if there's less income in people pockets, if businesses are closing down, if employees are being sent home, that is a discussion that will have to be had and we will have to bring people into the council and say, listen, let's, let's sit down and talk because it would impact what we collect. Obviously, like I said earlier, we collect about 65% of our annual inflows in the first three months. But we also don't want our residents out there to be suffering as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, there are some things that will perhaps be maintained, like your traffic revenue.
Sure.
People will still have to license their cars, that's probably going to continue. And I bring these issues up because I think that's where people thought processes right now.
Yes.
Because we just have so much uncertainty.
Agreed. And so the way to combat that is to have people understand that we will be on the ground, we will be listening, we're open for discussion.
Okay.
Because COVID-19 and its effects are changing every day.
That's right.
Even in some of our larger cities outside of the borders of Belize, some of these administrators and some of these people who are in charge of the cities, they really don't know.
Yeah.
The data is coming in kind of overnight and you have to crunch them and then you have to get out the information as to what your response will be like. And so we have to remain nimble like that and everything is on the table basically.
I mean, and as you said earlier, there's some securities already in place. The city will have to continue to function.
Exactly.
Whether there's a short term social distancing or shutdown that's in place or a longer term program, it has to continue functioning.
And I think the party leader, who's the co-chair, along with the Prime Minister, alluded to that yesterday because even some programs where monies were already allocated, they're looking to repurpose or refocus those funds.
Okay.
And so if that is happening at the national government level, then municipalities will also have to be looking at that as well. But I made the point yesterday, and I don't want to belabor it, but individually, each of us also are responsible on how we manage our affairs and our family affairs. So we have to have our little plan in place as well that can roll up into the larger plan of the city.
Yeah.
That can be, that then can be rolled up into the larger plan for the country. So while we ask people to act responsibly, your city council will be there as well every step of the way, trying to chart a way forward.
Yeah. And then going back to, you said the prospectus is going to be available online.
Yes, we already have the hard copies already that we gave to, gave out yesterday, but it will be put online as well.
So people can go ahead and read the information to get that additional security. What are some of the highlights, Chris, you would say, if you were advising someone on whether or not to invest that they should pay attention to?
Well, I think we, we went through probably the, the main one is the rate of return. Like I mentioned earlier, it's roughly three times what the alternatives, the comparative alternatives are out there in terms of regular bank deposits or government treasury bills. There are protections to the, to the investor in the sense of standby overdraft facility of 1.2 million dollars and as well the one year interest reserve fund, which will be pulled directly out of those proceeds and managed by the, or held by the fiscal agent so that besides the council servicing the, the interest and the overall debt on the municipal paper, that in event of any kind of default, that there is that interest reserve fund first and foremost, and thereafter the overdraft facility as well. So there are certainly those, those kinds of protections right off the bat. There, there as well is the set off provisions in terms of, to the extent that you may have property taxes or trade license fees or other monies payable to the council, that those can be set off against that in, that in. can be set off against that investment. So there are a number of protections that are in place.
Interest tax fee.
Right. One of the things that we were able to get from the government was an amendment to the Business Tax Act, so that the interest on municipal paper is exempt from business taxes. And that's something that other municipalities could also benefit from, to the extent that they look at something like this. A broader benefit, not to say just to the investors on a whole, but yes, to the investors, there is that flexibility in terms of tenure that you can maintain that investment, once you develop that level of comfort in knowing that the council will service, will uphold its end of the bargain, that you might be willing to keep the funds there on a longer-term basis. And the flip side to that is that with respect to the council itself, so far as this launch, this is part of that continuing development of our capital markets, so that with respect to this effort, it's not an all-in effort, it's an introductory effort. So this launch of $67 million, or initial launch of $67 million, once that is completed, then a track record is developed. I think it's, it becomes an opportunity for the council to tap into, just the same way that the government relies on T-bills as opposed to T-notes. And to that end, items that you guys have been discussing, including the municipal bond, could be visited upon so far as being able to refinance or pay out that instrument. Municipal bonds right now cost the city council 8% interest rate. I think by June of this year, the option to call on that bond becomes available to the council, so that the council then may consider the possibility of even paying that out, a portion or all of that out, with lower interest earning, their interest costs, municipal paper from eight to three and a half would be another substantial savings to the council, which could be utilized for other purposes or uses of the council as well. So this is certainly an introductory effort, but I think can ultimately provide quite a bit of flexibility in these times in particular.
Of course, of course. And I think the rate of return, as you said, is the biggest selling point. But you can also purchase your certificate, and if perhaps I change my mind, or I can also sell it.
Yes, there's, for the fiscal agent, for example, in the prospectus, there's a subscription form. But if you want to divest and you want to sell your certificate, you contact the fiscal agent and say, "Okay, listen, I have this amount that I want to sell off," and there's a mechanism there that you go through to have that done as well.
All right.
But one more thing, the success of the council only improves the success of a municipal paper like this. And so it behooves anyone who is leading the council, any council, not just us, that you continue to have financial success where your books are concerned and to keep those in order, because if you don't, then the confidence that people will have in the books and in the municipal bond will start to wane and start to go down. So it really is, it really a check and balance to make sure, to make sure that you continue in some of the fiscal prudence measures that we have.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in and helping us to understand the opportunity that is available in this latest municipal bond.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Have us as well.
We're going to go ahead and take a break, and when we come back, we're going to be talking about mental health and COVID-19, so please stay tuned.